All right, it is 4:30, so I will call the meeting to order. Do we have any agenda changes?
Just in addition, because even though I wasn't there in June, I can give a little report on the collaborative. I don't think it was on there, or maybe it was and I missed it.
Yeah.
Or I can skip it for October.
Won't be relevant anymore.
Okay, I can give a brief.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you can add me on for reports.
Okay. Great. My chair's report. I'm just gonna say Happy New Year to everybody.
Oh, same here.
I look forward to a great year as we help lead this small but mighty school. Do we have any members who wish to speak?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
That I picked up from the backpack mail. We're charging for breakfast now?
I think that's been, except for children who are on free and reduced.
I thought it was free all for everybody.
We had always intended for it to be a free breakfast.
Yeah, I think when it moved to last year, that it was a district lie, NOSID district lie. But I have to say, I don't think we've ever charged.
I hope not, because the whole idea was, and we felt we could raise money in order to pay for those breakfasts if need be, but that if a child needed breakfast, they should definitely have it and not be charged for it. So when I saw a dollar fifty, I think it said it was a dollar fifty.
A dollar fifty, right.
I thought, oh, I don't like that.
So I'll look into that to make sure that is.
Thank you.
Yeah, I thought you said it was free for everyone.
I think we used to get money from the bank, a grant.
We did, we did, and we got money from St. Vincent de Paul, from the Catholic Church. And I can get money from my friends, because I just feel that strongly about free breakfast.
Okay, you got it.
And there is no PTA tonight, but we could, I could certainly bring that for the late eight months.
Yes, yes, yes.
So maybe we even have it as an agenda item. If you think it belongs as an agenda item, we can.
Well, after you research it, yeah.
After searching, okay, sure.
Thank you, that'd be good, okay.
Okay, anyone else? All right, citizen speak? Okay, then we are gonna begin our priority business with the West PTA fundraising request. We're gonna have it.
I move that we approve.
Second and fourth point.
Great, is there any discussion?
I just want to point if I could. The spaghetti supper, they are seriously considering moving it to a November date. The reason being, when all was said and done, they didn't feel as though they made as much in that fundraiser as they had in the past. And they're attributing it to local churches. Other school districts are now offering a spaghetti supper around the same time of year. And second to that is that they are asking the same businesses, et cetera, to support West Fest, which isn't too far off. So they wanted to try it in November and see if the revenue increases.
This November or skip a year?
This November.
Do they have a tentative date for that?
I wanna say it was the fifteenth. Do you remember what it was? I think it was mid. It was after the long weekend and of course before the Thanksgiving break. I think it was the fifteenth, it's a Friday.
Okay, yeah, that's a Friday.
Yeah.
What do they think? So their theory is that there were other things?
There were other churches locally, Truro Central, that were having spaghetti supper around the same time of year. And that people are asking the same local businesses for support, and that it was just taxing. So they just thought that there was a drop in their funding. So they thought if they moved it to a different time of year and give it a try to see if that funding increases.
If it's not November fifteenth, can somebody send a group email? Because I wanna be there. I'm not sure I can serve yet, but I'm to think of it, but yeah.
Okay, so we have a move and a second. Shall we vote on the fundraisers unless there's any more discussion? Okay, so all in favor of the 2019-2020 PTA proposed fundraisers?
All right.
Great, so that's unanimous. All right, and now we are ready for Mary Beth's report.
So, in addition to the report I have provided, I also wanted to share a couple of things. One is I met with Spring Beckhorn, who does the academic programming with the Audubon with the schools. So we met the other day, and they have pretty much have aligned their programming with the science curriculum frameworks for each of the grade levels. They made some changes to it that she was very excited about. So these are the tentative programs for all of our students. And she wanted me also to let you know that the Wellfleet SPAT is funding the programs for grades four and five. So I wanted to give you a copy of what they have proposed to the classroom teachers for programs this coming year.
Looks like quite a list.
Quite a list. Spring has also.
Is this one page?
One page.
Ends at F. Oh, it's not, yeah, it is F, better go.
No, it's by grade level.
Oh, okay, all right.
See, time is there for some of the field investigations that were in parentheses. So those have been adjusted based on teachers' feedback. Some have been extended a little longer, others have been cut back. She was reaching out to the classroom teachers also for additional feedback, just so that they are really tailoring it to the needs of the classroom. And the other thing that I wanted to share was that I got this lovely note in the mail back in late July. And I just wanted to read a portion of it. I did read it to the staff when we got back on our very first day. And it says, Dear Mary Beth, it's worth, it's with great pride and happiness that I send you this year's eighth grade graduation program. You and the teachers at West have heavy hands in the shaping of these gorgeous examples of human beings. I've had more than my fair share of conversations with other West parents about what our kids have learned from all the lovely teachers and staff at West. And it thrills me every time to feel so good about my children's experiences from elementary school. I haven't done the math, but as you can see by the list that Wellfleet represents boldly. Since there were less than twenty kids in my child's class at West, and there are twelve in honors and high honors, that's something to toot your horn about. Much love and appreciation, Julie Norjo Rose.
Amen, that's beautiful.
So over sixty percent of our kiddos have reached honors or high honors.
Oh, my gosh.
In what grade is it?
They were the eighth grade graduating class.
Wow, thanks for sharing that.
That's right.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, what a thrill.
And then the other thing is.
Numbers are up, right?
Numbers are up, I'll get to that in just a moment. On page three, under School Climate. We have a new student that has entered West. And the IEP came, and the child requires a one-to-one. So I am in the process of interviewing for a new one-to-one. We'll probably go as high as step two. That's pretty much all we could afford. So I will keep you posted on that. I'm hoping that the new person is in place on Monday. Currently, I have a subject for the whole week to fulfill that role. And on the last page, page five, we are up to one hundred eight students, not one oh five. And I can tell you what the changes are, the increase.
Can we handle that many students?
We're doing it.
We added a bus.
So Ms. Wilson's class is now seventeen, not sixteen. Mrs. Ferry's class is now nineteen and not seventeen. So all in all, we have ten new students to our school.
And where are the two choice children, Mary Beth? I forgot.
They are grade one.
So they're with Ms. Wilson?
Correct.
And they did come, they are here.
They did, they're here.
They're here, all right.
For a small school, that's a nice percentage leap.
I remember one summer, we had twelve that came in.
Really?
One summer. I don't know if they all came, I don't think they all came to West, but they came into the district, whether they went to the middle school or high school, but there was twelve total in Wellfleet.
If we're not careful, our classes are going to be too big. Because we do have a policy of not wanting them more than eighteen, right?
Right.
The policy's twenty-five in the policy manual.
Yeah, but not ours.
Guideline.
Guideline, but not our school policy. So that would be wonderful if we could start adding teachers.
Wouldn't that be great?
Yes.
What are the hours of the after-school program?
From dismissal till five-thirty.
And then what happens at five-thirty? The parents pick them up, or?
So it's a stagger in dismissal. Parents come when they're finished with work.
When they can. Are the teachers represented by the union?
No.
No.
They're not teachers.
They're not teachers?
No, they're providers, childcare providers.
Okay.
It's under the childcare regulations, under DESI. They're not considered teachers. They don't have to have a degree. It's recommended, but they do not have to.
Okay.
Mary Beth, going back to page two. Is that a change, this handwriting?
No.
Thing, no?
No.
I just was never tuned in to when they learn handwriting. And I noticed with my own grandchildren, who are very resistant to reading my script, you know, that, yeah, they want me to print, you know. And I thought that was interesting that these children here are going to have to be able to read it well.
By fourth grade.
Yes, it's always been, as long as I've been in education. It's been starting in grade three and mastered by grade four.
By grade four, wow.
Middle school granddaughter can print.
Antidoted me, if I may, when I was teaching high school English to eleventh and twelfth graders. They were asking me, now, of course, this is ancient history, but the schools had given up cursive in an attempt to get the kids to write more. So they thought maybe having to do it with penmanship and cursive writing inhibited them. So in Concord-Carlaugh schools, there was no cursive writing. And we went through a week of teaching the kids in eleventh grade because they had to sign their dragger's license.
Wow.
And all they could do up to that point was to join with a little loop each end. And so we actually did Palmer, the Palmer method, so they could learn to write their name for their dragger's license. Anyway, that script is faster in printing, yes.
Any other questions or discussions? All right, we will get them talked about.
So first of all, in my opening remarks, I wanted to certainly speak about the great work our custodians have done, and this building in particular. And I think the hallways have come out really beautifully. I was in the buildings, I was probably up here three or four times over the summer break. And every day was humid and sticky in these buildings. And to see it accomplished and the workmanship and the pride. I mean, the staff love it, and the kids have noticed, and it's great. It's just a different feeling. So, and also to a number of our teachers, vast majority of the teachers in this building, quite honestly, who have come in early, before the school year started to get their rooms ready, and of course, offered the kindergarten program for new parents and so forth. So often, we only focus on contracts and things like that. And this is a perfect example of people giving lots of their own time to make sure things go well. So I certainly wanted to recognize those two groups of people. I want to just give you a highlight of some of the points that I was focused on in my opening remarks to all the staffs. I continue to travel around the district and meet with each of the individual groups. And finished for the second year now here in West. I had lunch with the staff, and it was great. We had a lot of great dialogue and discussion beyond just my remarks. And I'm sure in some cases, you might want to get some further information on some of the highlighted areas that I focused on. Over the summer, we had over sixty teachers participate in some form of project-based learning. That was a very, very successful effort for us. And obviously, our challenges are to continue this work going forward and expanding it as we grow with the program. And we also had, although it's not an elementary program, a number of our elementary people were either involved or interested in knowing more about restorative justice in terms of the discipline program. And I'm pleased to tell you that we have a united six-through-twelve program, probably the first time in a long, long time that it's been as unified as it is. Julie Cobald is our new principal of the middle school. And we had almost forty-five people between the two schools take training and restorative practices in many cases. Interesting enough, in their opening day exercises with that program, they opened up in a circle form, so that everyone could see each other and so forth. So it bears watching, and I know some of the elementary principals actually attended a couple of days of that work. I am anxious to continue our discussions about cybersecurity. And both Giovanna and I, I went to a four-day workshop with two hundred superintendents. And Giovanna was with her group, and we both came back comparing our notes. And a huge red flag, we get serious about this.
How do you know?
And there have been nine districts in Massachusetts shut down, mainly with ransomware. The state of Louisiana was shut down for a number of days, the entire state, this summer. And in talking with my sister, who spent a number of years teaching in Flagstaff, Arizona, she was just telling me the Flagstaff school system that was hit and shut the entire system down. And they have cars to get in their buildings, they couldn't even get in their buildings. It is, it is a real point of emphasis for us. And we're gonna be doing some analysis of our weaknesses. And I will share with you going forward that this isn't something we just purchased and it's solved. It is a behavior piece as well in terms of all of our employees. And we're going to see a much greater focus on this going forward. And to make my point with our staff, who sometimes thinks, you know, sometimes on Cape Cod, we don't have these problems. If we simply had our payroll go down and nobody was getting a paycheck for a couple of weeks till we had to clean that mess up, that would put a real hurt on a lot of people. We're not talking, and we didn't really dig deep into personal information on employees and children and families. So that's a focus point for us going forward. I spoke briefly on homework policy and gave an update where we were at. And I will be voting on that today, on the strategic plan. And offered them the opportunity in my chats that I would be coming around, that we could go much deeper into that conversation if they need that discussion. So I started today with Wellfleet, and I'll be working my way through my chats and all of the schools going forward. I challenged our staff when I finished up to think about this point. And the point was, are we teaching to our students for today? Or are we teaching our students for their future? And I asked them on drive, when they drove home, to give that some thought in terms of where are we going in the future with our planning? And I finished by talking a little bit about, I heard probably the finest presenter in my forty-seven years in education at the conference. And it was a gentleman who was one of the youngest professors in the area of psychology at William &amp; Mary. He had eight children, and he spoke for an hour and forty-five minutes at the conference. But his point was, I'll make three quick points of this. And I will not do justice to it. I shared a couple of things about this to a number of people. And I told them I couldn't wait to get home and share it with my wife in terms of this was literally two hundred superintendents rushing to stand up and applaud him at the end of this, after an hour and forty-five minutes. But I feel miserably in terms of communicating what it was. You almost have to experience it.
It's not on tape somewhere?
Yeah, we have a tape, and we actually have used it in a couple of schools. And I'm thinking with the administrative team. I have books that I purchased from this experience. But it's not earth-shattering in its truest sense. It's the application of the concept that makes the most impact. And that's going much deeper in knowing our students. And that, that isn't a huge issue in this building, although I challenge everybody. And this was a young man who lived in the inner city. And he had his brother, he didn't know a dad. And a brother was murdered on the street, so that he didn't identify the city. Another brother was twenty-four years into a twenty-five-year sentence in jail. And he was the kid that nobody wanted to touch. And he described a situation where at a school, they would high-five the teachers when they came in for the first day of school. And when he came by, they put their hands up. And he gave the example, if somebody had taken time to ask why he didn't do his homework, people would tell him, we don't have power in our home at night. And, but his point was that there is value in every student. And to never give up on any child and always keep looking for solutions to reasons of why there are issues. And so, and he described his situation. And his eighth child was a little girl being born. And she had a stroke, the child had a stroke. So they struggled, thought the child was never coming out of an institution and anything else. And after tremendous work by he and his wife and others, multiple surgeries. She's a sophomore at University of Virginia, wheelchair and so forth. But his point is to educators is that we all have backpacks. We all wear a backpack. And occasionally, you gotta take that backpack off and check in. Check in and see, what are we doing here? And he said, all someone that backpacks a mirror. And sometimes you gotta look in the mirror and see, what am I doing here? And so I spent some time working with staff on that. And we'll build on that with some of the books and some of the videos and things like that. But I think he's right on. And he gave examples of an assistant principal, and a teacher, and people who probably saved his life. And we have, we have students who are struggling mightily. And at times, they make it difficult to want to help them. But that's what, that's what we are as educators. So it was, as you can see, very powerful for me. We'll tell you, the interesting thing about it is he came to the conference at seven o'clock in the morning. And he's Afro-American. And he, at seven o'clock, we have coffee and doughnuts and so forth. And he had crazy shorts on and sneakers, and he had his cornrows. And he had one of the hip jerseys oversized and so forth. And it's a practice when he speaks and wherever he goes. And he's interested to see what the reaction is to him. And he tries to walk along into universities and speak. And he said typically under five minutes, campus security is there. Just because of the way he dresses, the way he looks. And so it was a fascinating discussion. You can see it had a lot of power on it, and other superintendents. And I hope to carry that forward. So meant a lot to me as an individual.
He's a professor where, Tom?
William &amp; Mary. And I don't want to, I mean, he was tremendously funny. And he used great music, his presentation, you know. Everybody in the place wanted his books. Everybody wanted to see if they could get him to his district. And the question was, how much will he cost? And the guess was thirty thousand dollars. So, but anyways, it was. Then, I don't mean to be long-winded here, just give you a little bit. We did have three days of, full days of administrative work with our administrators and teams, over at central office and building levels. And I'll just highlight just a couple of other areas. We spent a great deal of time with our new attorney. Paige Tobin is her name. And she's a pretty young for an attorney, and she's kinda hip and has some interesting cases, the study that we studied. And we really, got really focused on the difference between an act of bullying in civil rights of an individual and the way they're treated. So that was a live discussion, and I think the staff liked it a great deal. I just talked to Mort, we're about to get ready on our contract and negotiations. I think within the next couple of weeks, we'll call our team together. And we always turn to our administrators. I think we have sixteen items they would like at least some focus on or to understand better relative to the contract going forward.
Do we have a town official?
We've got some requests out right now.
Okay.
And we did a great deal of work. We have seen the updated strategic plan, where it stands at this point. They did a presentation, a run-through with us first. And we spent a lot of time on the project-based learning project, restorative justice. And our project is that we're continuing to look at, within our timeframes and means, how do we help the average teacher become even better? And so that is a focal point for us going forward. So that gives you a snapshot of some of the things we're working on.
Pretty exciting.
Thank you, Betsy.
Will you be doing the strategic plan?
Next month.
Update, you know, I mean, it's on our reports and information later.
So what we're planning to do with the strategic plan, Jan?
Yeah.
Betsy, okay?
Sure.
Is we're getting a rotation through all the school committees right now. And this month, Martha's on the strategic plan, and she wanted to be here. We want the person who is on that board. And so we're, we're going to jump in today with some discussion about the high school building project.
Right.
And this month is the strategic plan across all of our school committees, other than Wellfleet.
Oh, other than.
And next month, we'll have strategic plan here, and you will have heard already about the high school building project. Now, when you hear about the strategic plan, it's not done. We have a number of months, but what they're going to do is share where they're at, and they're going to ask for input. They're gonna ask for input from the board. They're also gonna see the same rotation through faculties. All the faculties are gonna hear the presentation for their input as well as we continue to build this out over the next few months. So that's.
Ma'am?
Yeah.
I did hear from Dr. Minkoff, and she's the one who's leaving. And so we already scheduled when she's coming out to our faculty meeting for she to give the presentation. And then she asked me to be on it. So I'm going to be on, there are five different topics. And so I'm going to be on the community partnership part of it.
Okay. So would that meeting be open to school committee members?
I don't know. I could ask her.
Could you?
I have, I have a sheet over here, because it was open. I brought it up to the staff last week at our opening, that they're looking for representatives from the schools as well and to apply, if you will, to Maxine on this particular form of which area out of the five areas that will be on the strategic plan that they would like to work in a working group for. So I can share that with you as well and see if, because you check off if you're a staff person, administrator, et cetera, so I'll see if there is a school committee member. Okay, Tom?
So just, and Mary Beth has really hit most of the points. That group that's being put together will also be going out to seek input of information relative to the topic that they're looking at. So, and you'll get all of this. This will not get beyond you. You'll get all of this and have an opportunity to choose to get on some of these committees and things like that. So thank you. So thank you. Thank you, Mary Beth.
Oh, sure. Great. So that brings us right to the high school building project.
So, we, we are moving along. A tremendous amount of time was put into this project going forward over the summer. I think Chris Elsasser, Kathleen Dragali, myself, I think we went to Boston four times, four days already over the summer. It is amazing how much time this thing is eating up. Where are we at? And we're very, very interested in working closely with our elementary schools because the dates that we're talking about is that we plan to go to the voters, in this case the Monday after a vacation in Wellfleet and bring it forward for a vote on the project.
Town meetings?
Yeah, town meetings. We're ready, we see this in that time. The other piece that relative to the project is we see how this will roll out. The high school students will not be pleased because more than likely, nobody at the current high school will see this project completed. And there's a distinct possibility, possibly an eighth grader, but we got a long ways to go. We're just, we just entered into the schematics of the inside of these buildings. So it's, it's our elementary students and middle school students who will reap the benefit of all this work of going into a state-of-the-art facility, okay? And for the first time, and I'm really pleased, I'm really pleased of the direction of our administrative group in terms of our principals, elementary principals at our summit said, "Oh, we can help too." Now, I think, this is my third project.
It was high school, it's.
Not Mary Beth, but everybody else.
She was in the front. And sometimes in a project, sometimes I wondered if anybody else in the district even knew what was going on. And the principals wanted to get a much clearer idea of the project. This will stay in the building. Chris Easley is about to put this same flyer or.
Excuse me?
Display in the library and town halls and council on ages and so forth, just to begin to get people thinking about the building project. The, the key piece of this is at some point doing lots of presentations. We're, we're looking right now, a matter of fact, Saturday, four of us worked much of the morning on the presentation going forward. And I can tell you that we're focused on an approach that begins to say why. This is a TED Talk and this has been a very popular piece on, on how to move things forward or sell things and so forth and so forth. And so, it's really, we start with the why. And, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna give you hours of, I'll keep it concise, but you're going to get a lot more on this. The why is that we have a tired and worn-out facility. And I'm gonna give you some information now. If you would like individually a tour of this facility, you can call the high school, call the principal's office and it'll be offered on Wednesdays, somewhere either four or five P.M. And we've had a lot of people tour this building and I encourage every citizen to take advantage of the tour. I can tell you right now that in, in working with some boards already and community situations, the general consensus, there is no doubt that we need to do something about that facility, okay? And it's antiquated in terms of its plumbing and mechanics and its heat. And so, that we'll get into in much greater depth relative to the why. And then, how. Now, you have a pretty good understanding, how is to MSBA, Massachusetts School Building Authority. We were selected two and a half years ago, almost, yeah, at least two and a half years ago at this point. And our vote is approved within three weeks of going into town meetings, one point three million dollars, and in this, laying the four towns to do a feasibility study on this, on this project, okay? And at this point, we have just finished some of the rough numbers and the work relative to the plan. We had sixteen plans potentially of what the new, the new high school would look like. It included a brand-new high school and it had a total renovation of the campus. It had partial renovations and so forth and so forth. And we even looked at, because the MSBA requires this, where could we find forty-eight acres, I think it was, to build a brand-new high school somewhere other than this site? And we found no site in the four towns when it all finished up. So this is what we would know on the committee as four A, or this is the model. The building committee is made up of members from all four towns, the sending towns, and it has a number of required positions like the business manager, the superintendent, the high school principal. And on this committee, we have four teachers. That's the first time I've seen teachers on a building committee at, at least NOSA and they've been very, very helpful. So this will be out here for you to take a look at. I'll just hit some of the highlights. Here's, here's an interesting piece. You will hear us talk about developing not necessarily a NOSA regional high school, but a NOSA learning center for all. We believe that this center should be enhancing the learning of all the citizens, young and old, in our communities. And one of the pieces that we believe is, is that particularly as, as there's so much focus on the demographics and the potential of fewer students being available, in order to keep robust staffs together, we see that the possibility of this, this community school going up to seven days a week, evening programs and so forth, okay? When we look at what is the facility, I can tell you if you're familiar at all with this facility, you can see, and it's hard to read at your distances away, but you can see in the center the orange pieces. What's actually going to happen is that we are going to tear two buildings down in this plan. We're gonna take the science building down and we're going to take the cafeteria down. You can see that's generally in that middle section and you can see the orange represents new buildings. The other question that I hear all the time, what about security? And people are very concerned about its open nature. So you can see that, you can't, you can't tell from the distance you're away, but I can tell you that we will have the capacity to have complete control of who's coming onto campus and off the campus. Through gates. Gates, okay? So.
Gates to entering the campus.
Exactly right. Now, interesting enough, and some people have picked up on this pretty quickly, you can see the vast majority of the parking is in the front of the building. It no longer spreads all around the entire campus. And, and interesting enough, this is the main entrance area and this is where we'll control all the movement of students onto the campus electronically. We'll be able to control these gate systems electronically and we hope to do the handsome and something that you look at and you're proud of. Over on this side, as you look at it more, this is more in line, we had a lot of criticism of people who, when we brought the public on the campus, the parking wasn't really accessible to the facilities like the auditoriums, gymnasiums and things like this. So it's really designed over here to take that flow of traffic for the events and things like that. So, and then what you're going to see is, you're gonna see a more enhanced courtyard area because right now, it's difficult to see the displays of the work of students in all of our areas and that will be a focal point. So when you come into the courtyard, you'll be, see a massive areas of displays of student work as you go into it. The, the other piece that's interesting, it's a philosophical piece, is that one of the weaknesses that the teachers and the teachers have, and the district have worked very hard on the academication for this going forward. And one of the trips that we had to go into is, is we had to spend an hour with the MSBA experts on the relationship of the educational vision as it relates to the building. Interesting enough, and I promise not to get too off, sidetrack here, the MSBA loves this project. And they love it because it's different. And so, having so many trips up there, the vast majority of the building, building is boxes.
Is what?
Boxes. Some configuration of a box. How big will it be? We'll be of second stories on that. One of their experts in our presentation quite honestly did a fantastic job at this last meeting. And she remarked at how, she had never in all her years on the MSBA, heard this presentation start with talking about landscaping. And the landscaping as it relates to learning areas for students in the natural setting. And so, they're, they've almost all been down here just to see it personally because in some cases they had heard of this architect and wanted to see the sort of concept of a campus. And so, we're now going into a phase, tomorrow we have a big meeting and we're gonna be starting, starting to look at the schematics of the inside. What will it look like inside? Now, if some of you have worked with the MSBA, they are scripting everything. The interesting thing is when we did in-building, many of you know in-building, it's the newest building on campus. At that time, the square footage for classrooms for high school students was eight hundred square feet. The new guideline, you know, twenty years later, is eight hundred and fifty square feet.
Oh, for heaven's sake.
So those is, that's all built into the work we're about to do. And so, we can start there for now. And this is the model. The configuration that we're operating from, that was decided two and a half years ago, was the configuration would be still a nine through twelve high school and a six, eight middle school for the region. And we're still pushing forward with that, okay? That's not, that's not debatable, that's not, that was decided at the beginning of the process. And finally, as you know, on MSBA projects, they look at, and they do a complete demographic study of our enrollments and projections. And this building is being built for nine hundred and five students. Now, that's the MSBE, and they set a number and it's nine oh five for this project. Now, we're fine with that. We wanted somewhere between nine hundred and a thousand. And that had ramifications relative to some funding and things like that, but we don't need to get that deeply into it now. Quick questions as you're hearing this. I'll go ahead.
The, by the time you come to the Wellfleet Selects meeting, you might have changed this configuration, right?
No.
This is it?
This is a, this is a, and we're coming to the FinCon, we're coming, we're lining up, Anne is, she's been quite a year. We got lots of egs. We have been in the summer already in front of the Brewster FinCon with the selectmen listening on. We are going to Orleans on the eighteenth with their boards. We're coming to, I met with Fred McGee. Fred's the chairman of the FinCon now and had a great talk. And we're coming in front of that group on the twenty-eighth, is it, Anne?
I think it's the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. So we're lining up our communities now and we've had a conversation with Eastham this summer. So this is just starting in terms of this, but this model of, of what the campus will look like is, is, is what it's, it's going to be.
But parts of the reasons that you've made some changes, are those from financial consideration?
So there are, money is an issue.
Yeah, no, I mean like that.
Yeah, I hear that.
Always.
So. So let me talk, if you mind, Mort, I'll mention a couple of things about the finances. One of the issues, and we've heard this now from one of the towns, some, after seeing it, some, some people have thought we should just pull this whole thing in. Now, the interesting piece is that they have been diligent in looking at the existing buildings. They have bunkers, they are, we knew, what got us down this path was that when we did the windows and roofs at the high school, they couldn't believe what great shape the nuts and bolts on that building, those buildings were. And they're, and they're very comfortable with the structures at this point. The, the difference between renovating this model here and building a brand-new high school and that was one of the, we had four finalists that we got down to. One was a brand-new campus. The difference is eleven million dollars.
Eleven what?
Eleven million dollars. So that's where we stand. There's no question, Mort, the price tag that has been floated around, I think maybe you've heard it or seen it, but it's a hundred and forty million dollars today. Now, that's a, a rough estimate by both the architect and the owners' project manager. I can tell you that tomorrow we'll find out that we, we got our asbestos number and it's down a million, one point one million. So that will come off the price tag and we're looking at numbers now as we go forward. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. I mean, we're also beginning to look at what's our plan going forward to have a robust academic program while the project is going forward. What will that look like? Will there be portable classrooms? What are our thoughts on that? That's well underway in terms of looking at that as well. So that's what I know today.
The letters to the editor keep raising the cost of the building. That is an issue.
A little PR might help with the newspapers. I read the editorial in the Cape Cod Times that came out. It's right after you went to the Brewster FinCon. And it was very negative and I was very disappointed in their approach. And I, to the extent that, at the end of that, I don't know if anybody ever read that whole column, but I read the whole thing and I called up the Cape Cod Times and I stopped my subscription that afternoon. They had the nerve to say Brewster, Orleans, Eastham and Truro.
They said, did you see that? They said Truro was part of the lawsuit.
I think if you can't get something like that right, if a newspaper cannot, after an editorial, if they can't even get that right, I said, "I don't wanna read that newspaper."
They admitted their error ten days later.
Well, I didn't see that 'cause I didn't get it.
It is.
Yeah, I have to make do with the bossing low, but I couldn't get over that. And I thought to myself, you know, too bad that they're choosing to be on that negative side right away.
Yeah. So one of the pieces for us is, is we're gearing up, we're really picking up the pace now. Many of us felt that over the summer, we get lost as a community and with so many visitors coming in and it's hard to get anything really sustainable, but, so you're going to see Anne, I mentioned Anne earlier already, I think it's safe to say we'll be at least going out to seventy-five groups or more to speak individually. This campaign here is just to be able to say to people, "Oh yeah, there's something coming." And, and forums and on and on and on. So we have a lot of, lot of things planned and we're ready to start really now pushing because we gotta sustain this all the way to April in terms of our efforts and discussions. As your superintendent, I truly believe my job is to tell the story. And that's where we get into the why, the what and the how. And so, we're, we're now doing a PowerPoint presentation and with images around the reasons of, of why we need this facility and on and on. So it, it is about to percolate and, and quite honestly, I think this is one of the first times of district-wide we've talked about a project because we are a regionalized system in the sense that our kids are gonna go to this facility.
Yes, they are.
And we want boards to understand it, we want communities to understand it, we want our student body to understand it and our PTOs and on and on it goes. So that's kind of where we're at.
Quick question. Now that the option has been selected and the price tag as of today is a hundred and forty million, has MS- has MSBA given a number for reimbursement?
So, thank you, Mary Beth. That's the estimated cost of the project. I can tell you that there is a strong desire by this committee, although I speak just as myself here right now. There is some desire that the number that comes to the community to fund would be under $100 million.
Now, where'd that come from?
So, what would, what would be, where did, was that? So we have a general idea of what we can anticipate for a contribution by the MSBA. And we think that there are some opportunities to find some money in the project, like 1.1 million has been found with the asbestos that wasn't there that they thought might be there, things like that. So we think there's a very good chance that we'll be under that number of 100 million when we ask for the funding of this. Giovanna's involved, and Jim asked for a position paper on how will the vote go? What is the vote that carries this forward? So for instance, it will be four out of four.
Four out of four, right?
Four out of four with a majority vote in each community passes.
You're saying it has to be four and four?
Yes.
Brewster's the problem.
So Jim and Giovanna, all the way down to the bonding possibilities that we're looking at, what does 20 years look like, 25 years, 30 years? So we'll have a position paper, a financial position paper on this that we can push out to our town leaders and our boards and so forth. And so we're gearing up pretty quickly, so, but thank you. That's what we're looking at right now. Thank you.
Possibly the people who write those negative letters represent a tiny minority. We don't know.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly right. I mean, this is a democracy. People have a right, and I think that our job is to tell the story and make sure people have all the information they need. And I went back, I was crazy thinking. I met Sarah Peak many, many years ago when she ran for office. And we often laugh about it now, she went door to door. And she knocked on my door, and I said, oh my, what are you doing? Who are you? And I've come to, and I was thinking about, do I want to go door to door? My position is not to sell people, that's a matter of fact, you can't do that. My position is to tell the story of this project. And so was it.
That tiny minority wrote that Sarah Peak's a communist. The same minority from...
Yeah, there you go. So thank you for listening.
That's really, it looks like a beautiful project from here.
Okay, Giovanna, you have a budget review for us?
Well, I'm going to give a final accounting of the FY '19 budget. We have not encumbered the salaries for fiscal '20, so we're working on that and we'll have that for the October meeting. We're going to encumber all the salaries for the budget update. But we ended the year with, the total budget was $2,688,903. And that also included $57,000 that we received through the May town meeting to cover the costs of the student collaborative. So the total budget was $2,688,903. We spent $2,482,925. We encumbered $205,795, which consisted of payroll and purchases, leaving a balance of $184. In fiscal '19, we did prepay the preschool, $44,061. We prepaid some tuition for the collaborative, $9,500, and we also prepaid some transportation costs of $12,000. So for fiscal '19, we had a total of $65,561 that we prepaid in order to cover the costs for the new student that was unanticipated and budgeted for for fiscal '20. So we'll have more information next month.
Yeah, because, you know, we spend so much time trying to understand that one student with the collaborative that was so expensive that we got money from the town, extra money for. But we have another student who is an outplacement, and I don't know about that student. I don't know how that's financed, I don't know.
We'll have more detail next month. It'll be a combination of the prepayments that we made at the end of last fiscal year and then some other funding within the operating budget and other ones.
So I guess I'm just hoping that we're going to be solvent.
We'll look at the salaries that we'll be encumbered. Then we'll look at where we are and we'll monitor it throughout the year. I feel confident.
Pardon?
I feel confident.
You do? Okay. That's what I wanted to hear.
We're not tracking quick yet.
Yeah. Swept the initial stages.
Have to put those cups back out.
Oh, boy.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so we have the homework policy that we are to approve for a second reading and adoption.
I make a motion to approve the hallelujah new homework policy.
Yes.
Okay, and is there any discussion?
Very good stuff.
Yeah, I like it.
What an okus.
Okay, questions, discussion, we're good?
I'd like to know that it says at one point, reading on your own.
All right, let's have a vote. All on paper.
No, thank you. I mean, that was a, that was a good thing to choose to get into, I think, and well-spent.
All right, so we've had our strategic plan subcommittee report already and information. So that brings us to future agenda items. And this is just a chance for us to think about anything that we, you would like to talk about at some point this year, and we'll work it into the agenda. So, does anybody want to start? I mean, we may be working in the breakfast if one's, Mary Beth, something that came up.
Well, you're paying, you still paying bills?
I am.
To make sure she is. I move that we adjourn.
What else?
So right now, we're attempting to start a discussion here.
Paying the bills comes before adjournment.
But we're not on minutes. Future agenda items, is there anything this team wishes to place on an agenda item this year?
At the moment, nothing bubbles up, but thanks for the opportunity, you know. And as time goes on, we'll probably add.
Can we keep that open for...
So you'd like another opportunity to have?
Absolutely, yeah. I didn't know what you had in mind when I saw that on the agenda. But I'm sure there are some things that we should be considering. I know we're wonderful, but I still think there are things that we can do to improve.
I agree.
So we'll keep that, you know, every so often, we'll put it back on. Maybe not October, but November? Does that make sense to do it maybe every other month? Or would you like to see it again in October?
I'd like to see it again in October, if that's possible.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. Great. Okay, then, the minutes.
Wait, we added the collaborative for special reports?
And I wrote it so messy I couldn't leave my writing.
You know the feeling. You know cursive?
I guess I should learn it.
Okay, so just briefly, I wasn't at the June meeting, but I can update people about what went on. So here's all these different handbooks that people approved. I did go through them, that people approved on the June meeting. And we can, you can take one home if you like. Cape Cod Collaborative Policy and Procedures, Healthcare Manual, Parent and Student Handbook, Emergency Response Handbook for the STAR programs, for the alternative high school emergency response, Employee Handbook, Transportation. So we did have some draft forms to look at.
I take the Transportation.
Sure. Any other handbooks to go?
You can take the Parent and Student Handbook.
Sure. So glad to be useful here with all these resources. They really, so Parent and Student?
A lot of trees went down.
Well, okay, so healthcare, emergency response for the high school or for the younger folks, and employee handbook.
Employee, we take the healthcare.
Okay, so the alternative high school waypoint, perhaps you've been reading the Cape Cod Times paper. Still have subscription. And the collaborative has had a lease with Sandwich leasing the Wing, what used to be the Wing Elementary School. And it looked like it was going to be a done deal, but not so sure. But the lease goes through June 30th, 2020. So the collaborative did make a bid on extending the lease. However, a housing, I really don't know the total details about it, but the bottom line is there's another bid out to develop the Wing School property into housing apartments or something like that. And the Select Board was supposed to deliberate and come to a decision which bid to take this fall, but now they've extended it, I believe it's to May, which puts a very uncomfortable position for the collaborative about what to do. So now the collaborative is once again looking at other options such as, it might be too early to disclose some of this, but they are looking into other options and not assuming that they can renew the lease for the Wing School. So that's problematic. There is a collaborative meeting tomorrow, this is on the agenda tomorrow, so I can update people about this development in October. Happily, there's a wonderful partnership with Bridgewater State for Professional Development for both undergrad and graduate coursework. And the intention, the what and whys, to promote efficient and quality undergraduate, graduate, and professional development for school districts in the region, and that's coming along really quite well. Again, I wasn't able to go to the June meeting. There were appointment of officers, kind of the boilerplate thing that happens in June. And finally, the Cape has a Professional Development Day on October 11th. Not all schools participate with the collaborative for professional development, but the professional development that the collaborative offers is for some nice specialty areas such as early childhood. There's a number of, at least maybe four, possibly five workshops for early childhood people. And for counselors, physical education and health teachers, art, music. And that's my report for tomorrow's meeting. Thank you, Jim. You're welcome.
Questions?
Just a little comment that I'm surprised they could have a quorum without you as I know that...
I feel like that's been one of my biggest serious contributions to the collaborative because as many times they barely make a quorum. Or we're waiting for people to make a quorum. Or the chair will go ahead with informational stuff and once we, you know, we'll change around the agenda. And then once we have enough people, we make a quorum. I do believe one of the couple of times I wasn't able to go, there wasn't a quorum.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's why I'm surprised they managed to pass that.
And I say it in humor, but also quite seriously. You know, I'm one of the regulars in...
It's marginal.
My big contribution, making a quorum. You're welcome.
Okay, on to minutes.
May I make a couple of corrections? Page one, under Principals Report, it's Mr. Staker.
Oh, gosh, whoops.
And the next sentence, it's Mrs. Kate Clark. Thank you. That's it, thank you.
Any other?
Hey, any other motion?
I move we approve the minutes as corrected.
Okay, on paper.
May I, I'm sorry, another one?
Yes.
So under Member Speak, Jan Flower reported that she visited Andrew Staker's classroom.
No.
No.
Whose did you say?
Andrew Clark.
Oh, it's at the high school.
This gave me trouble.
It wasn't clear.
Yeah, now he had, as in his sophomores, in the report at the high school. And he reached out to the school committee. That's okay. So I will repeat, may we approve the minutes as corrected.
Okay, on paper. And then do we have a motion?
Well, there being no further questions.
I will pay the best tonight. All right. So, second. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jan, I'll go, grab that.